No, we will go on with the virtual comments and then we respond?
Yeah.
All right. First comment is from Danielle Taylor of Centerline. They said, "Dear members of the Dearborn Board of Education, this is a story to both celebrate and mourn the conditions of our instrumental and vocal music programs in Dearborn. I grew up just down the road in Wayne, Michigan. I'm a proud 1994 alum of Wayne Memorial High School. As a member of the instrumental music program, I often attended events where we spectated other schools performing. Many times, these events included enassembles from multiple Dearborn schools. The programs were impressive in both preparation and numbers. 2016, after facing cuts in my current district, I knew it was time to move on and look elsewhere. I was able to interview and eventually received an offer to teach at Fortson High School and Eunice Middle School. I knew a little of what had happened through some research, but wanted to do my due diligence before accepting the position. A former band director administrator arranged for me to make a visit to the schools, see the facilities, and most importantly, meet the students. Upon my arrival, I was greeted by several students that were eager to tell me everything that they could about the program and what they had been, had been happening. I looked beyond that and only saw students that needed leadership and someone to teach them. Our orchestra program was down to nine students in 2016, so small, in fact, that they were grouped with the band students. For anyone that has studied instrumental music, this is a parajical no-no until they have reached a near-expert level on their own instruments. I got to work immediately with our extremely supportive building administration, and we were able to separate the students into appropriate groups. Over the next five years, we saw our orchestra climb from thirteen, twenty-four, fifty-three, and seventy. We were able to offer a second section of the orchestra because the numbers had grown and so had the level of music ability. After performing at the MSBOA Band and Orchestra Festival the past few years, our students went from receiving ratings of low fours, below average, and comments like "go back and start over." Our more advanced students received a rating of two outstanding and only fell short of a few points of the coveted one, exceptional rating. Progress has been made. This was March of 2020, one week before we shut down. Many of these students will be performing in December at our board meeting. The tragedy in the story is that our music program is dying. I think that's what he meant. They have been dying since I began employment here in 2016. What do, I believe, the cause, the lack of supported middle school program district-wide. Hundred percent of our students, especially sixth to eighth grade, need the opportunity to receive an instrumental or vocal education. Dearborn is home to one of the finest program performing arts centers I have ever set foot in. We have the Dearborn Symphony Orchestra in our community. Dearborn is home to the Players Guild of Dearborn. We are home of the Dearborn Youth Symphony. All wonderful organizations that expand and share the arts with the community, and yet our school programs are dying. I ask you, the Board of Education, why are you not demanding more? We live and work in arts communities, yet the very place where the building blocks should be coming from, we do not have or even support by offering one hundred percent of our middle school population. I ask you as fellow Board of Education trustee, demand that we find a way to offer these programs district-wide and the opportunity gap that exists in Dearborn Public Schools. Next comment, I believe, was already addressed by Mr. Ramzi Shohati, so we will be skipping that. To Ms. Lieber of Gross Points says, "In March of 2019, at twelve-week post-partium, I learned the day that I would come back would be our first shutdown day. Within twenty-four hours, we had completely figured out how to flip our classroom to a virtual platform. After twelve years of teaching, it took me a new mom, twenty-four hours, to figure out a plan that was to save the rest of the school year. I'm proud of the work that I did, as I should be. Teachers always prevail in time of need. I know that I did because my students from last year still come back with memories of the lessons we learned during unusual yet productive year. Many people not in education may question why we have chosen this career path, considering all of the negative aspects they hear in the news. Having said that, we must all point out to the positives in the teaching profession. Teachers are passionate about the subject matter they teach; otherwise, they would never be in the profession. Teaching gives you the opportunity to share the passion and knowledge with others. Two, there is nothing wrong, or there is nothing more inspiring than when you see a student you have, to have an aha moment. Watching your students succeed and grasp new concepts is the best feeling in the world. Three, teaching is a career that offers a huge support system built right into your daily routines with the people that stand side by side with you daily. I'm writing in so that you too can acknowledge the great things that teachers do for Dearborn Public Schools. We are the staple holding the stack together." Mrs. Diana Goodhue of Livonia says, "Good evening. My name is Diana Goodhue. I am a third-grade classroom teacher at Salina Elementary. The last year and a half have been quite challenging for both students, teachers, and administrators. Yet I had the privilege of witnessing my colleagues and myself step up to the challenge in ways I would never have imagined just two short years ago. I watched my PLC team work together to move everything we did online in a matter of twenty-four hours. I have watched my colleagues prepare materials to physically hand to students and virtually provide for students. I watched all of us work to take everything we know to do in the classroom and adjust in, or adjust it to provide quality instruction online, and then to adjust it right back to being in the classroom. I have seen veteran teachers adopt entirely new strategies to reach their students every single day. I have made deliveries with my colleagues of materials, presents, and more to our students. We have showed up early, stayed late, and brought back home in order to make sure that we are providing the very best instruction to our students possible. We have implemented an entirely new curriculum in the middle of a pandemic. Now that we are back in the classroom, I am watching my colleagues and myself take on trauma-informed education for a group of students that have suffered trauma like, unlike anything that we've seen during our lifetimes. We are doing everything in our power to make sure these students are both learning as our job requires, but also that they feel loved and cared for when they are with us so that they can be successful. This is not easy, and I have watched my friends and colleagues jump every hurdle thrown their way with grace and determination. I love my job. I love my students more than I can put into words. I love the community that I am surrounded by and my fellow teachers throughout the district. It is frustrating to see my peers leaving for districts where they feel better supported. I want Dearborn students, I want Dearborn schools to retain the amazing teachers that we have, who do all, all of the above and more. In order to truly put students first, we must take care of our teachers, who give, who go above and beyond for them. This is especially important for teachers who have stayed in Dearborn and worked hard over the years to provide the quality education that we deliver every single day, regardless of the challenges that we face. The teachers of this district deserve to be supported and shown that they are valued." Mr. Marwan Ahmed of Dearborn said, "I'm sending in a blue card in support of my wife and many other teachers that work for DPS. During quarantine, I watched my wife juggle teaching students on Zoom while also tending to our children. My wife did her best to ensure that students were learning and also having fun. We all know how our kids suffer during the quarantine. They miss being in school. My wife and many other teachers did their best to help their students cope with the quarantine. Let me tell you, we struggled like many other parents, but not many understand what it's like teaching from home with your own kids who are also on Zoom, the day never needed for my wife. Throughout the day, she would struggle teaching over Zoom and making sure that our preschooler was learning as well. We also have a high schooler who struggled because not much was done for kids with IEPs. She did the best she could to make sure our kids submitted their work and were learning. Her own students somehow became family. They met our kids and would see my wife's struggle. I would hear them comment and say, "Miss, I feel bad for you. I wish I could help." We did our best, but we endured. The kids learned. I watched them make strides, especially our preschooler. We were amazed at the lessons that she was learning. Teachers delivered supplies to our home. I was amazed by their commitment. It's important that they are recognized for what they have endured during COVID. They truly are essential workers. Not that they helped with COVID, but they helped keep our kids learning and coping during this awful pandemic. They provided some sense of life and connection we needed, and top it off, our kids actually learned and made strides." Ms. Sylvia Oathley, she said, "Board members, unfortunately, I cannot read this in person, but when asked to share the amazing work my colleagues and I are doing, I could not pass the opportunity. I love what I do, and I know the teachers in my building share this passion. I'm a teacher at Eunice Middle School. Our strong staff has demonstrated time and time again the power of collaboration and teacher, and teacher leadership. Here are a few thank-yous I'd love to share publicly. Thank you to our PBIS team, this team of teachers, raise money and community support to make sure our behavior program is well-funded and has amazing incentives for students. They continue to find creative ways to work around the limitations COVID has placed on us. We've had some amazing raffles, events, and videos. Thanks to their hard work, more importantly, they clearly define the behavior expectations and work to set everyone up for success as we transition back to the full-time in-person learning. Thank you to my colleagues who has taken over the MTSS program in our building. This program is aimed to support struggling students. She is a classroom teacher, taking graduate-level courses, and she continues to volunteer her time to organize the work, lead staff meetings, advocate for students, and guide the staff in the process. This is a hard volunteer task, and she does it with grace and passion. Thank you to our social workers and counselors for giving just right amount of support and structure as our students transition back to full-time learning. The two of them work to equip students to advocate for themselves in very positive ways. They help them work through their trauma and share their snippets that classroom teachers need to respond in a trauma-informed way to our students. The workload they face is immense, and yet they believe in the power of showing up. So they do, day after day, and it makes a difference. Thank you to our ELL Title I, Title III teachers, who are trying their hardest to maximize their time with their caseloads. Because of the staffing shortages, they tend to get pulled from their regular assigned duties to suffer any teacher who is out. When they are working with their students, the progress is so much efficient. The students miss them dreadfully and when they are not available for push-in support. They rely on the vital services. I teach math, and my newcomers' students are smart. They understand the math. We just need the pisky English to get the way, to get out of the way. Our ELL teachers allow that to happen in a seamless and organic way. Their presence in the classroom is vital to the student's success."
Trustee Hosep, can you summarize the remainder of this?
More thank-yous to her colleagues and said that they're proud to be a Dearborn Schools teacher and that they could not imagine a better staff to work with. Next comment is Mrs. Kathleen Adams of Westland. "Dear Dr. Malakow and Board members, my name is Kathleen Adams, and this is my thirty-three-year-as-a-proud-special-ed teacher of Dearborn Schools. I would like to acknowledge just a few of the incredible things I have witnessed since COVID changed our world. First, I would like to express my gratitude to the administration and to the board members for their careful efforts to keep staff and students safe during the global pandemic. Next, I would like to acknowledge our principal, Mrs. F. In 2016, I joined the staff at Howe School. Under her leadership, it has been my privilege to walk alongside her during the most challenging experiences of my teaching career. She leads her staff by example with a stellar work ethic, compassion, and rich supply of knowledge and understanding of our school community. The principal genuinely cares for our staff and is passionate about providing a safe, nurturing, and a highly effective environment for all of our students under her care. I'm proud to be part of her team." Last but not least, I would like to recognize the excellence efforts of Mrs. R. She is currently in her third year as a mentee and teaches severely cognitive impaired elementary-age students. I have the privilege of being her mentor. Mrs. R. is highly effective within her classroom and the school community. When I moved to virtual learning, I relied on Mrs. R., on Miss R.' vast knowledge and skills for reaching out or to our population virtually. She spent time with several staff members, teaching us new skills we would need to reach our students. I'm so grateful for her technology skills and her willingness to help us all up our game in our virtual world. Mrs. Miss R. is a definite credit to the teaching profession. We are lucky to have her. In closing, I would like to say that I could go on and on about strengths and connections we have made during these unprecedented times, but wish to be respectful of everyone's time. Thank you for taking the minute to read a few words why I'm proud to be of Dearborn Public Schools."
I'll take over for a few.
Sure.
Next is from Ms. Elizabeth Gutierrez. "Board members, I'm writing this blue card to share with you what I've seen at Gear Park during the pandemic and prior to the pandemic. Teachers supporting each other during emotional stress. Teachers coming into Gear Park and staying hours before and after contractual time to work in their classroom to make a safe and inviting environment. Teachers and support staff giving emotional support to struggling families and students. Teachers planning before and after school to make learning fun. Teachers calling families to give them emotional support after school hours, often taking time away from their own families. Teachers staying after school to supervise students when buses are thirty to fifty minutes late after our contractual time with no compensation. Teachers staying positive for their students and putting them first. Teachers scrambling to find the vaccine to be safe before returning to in-person learning. Teachers wearing masks to keep students safe even if they are vaccinated. Teachers supporting families all the time, not just during the pandemic. All staff at Gear Park love their students and put them first. Thank you for your time. Ms. Elizabeth Gutierrez, first-grade teacher at Gear Park Elementary." Next is from Nicole Hartrick. "I'm a band and concert director for STEM Howe, Howard, and Hague Schools. Teaching two separate subjects at four different schools across four grades certainly has its challenges, but over my eight years with the district, I have found methods to make everything run smoothly for students to feel valued and for fun to be had by all. Many nights and weekends are spent carefully selecting developmentally appropriate material, generating my own assessments, planning the logistics of field trips and concerts, and creating lessons that are both engaging and informative. Not only was learning to teach every single instrument an initial struggle, so is learning how to repair instruments, how to warm up ninety kids at a time before the concert in the gym, which I set up in the hours between school and the beginning of the big event, and navigating the pandemic and remote learning provided to be an entirely new challenge in which students could not play together in a Zoom. I had to travel from house to house all across town to repair instruments and distribute supplies to students, and I spent over twenty hours diligently editing audio and video together to create a virtual concert. Prior to the pandemic, it was normal to have twelve different concerts and field trips with my STEM students. We fundraised year-long so that we could see the Detroit Symphony Orchestra perform in person, rent a U-Haul so we could take our equipment to a local senior center or veteran organization and perform a full concert for residents, march in the Memorial Day Parade, and of course, every student's favorite concert, our performance at Cedar Point. It's quite a bit of work, but the students get used to having high expectations, learn the discipline of practice, and the pride of a performance done well. I write all this to showcase how the music teachers in Dearborn go above and beyond to create positive learning experiences for their students despite a number of challenges. Music directors at Fortson Heights School must deal with the fact that many students enter the ninth grade with no opportunity to take a band or concert class at their middle school. This means not only does Fortson have no real chance at competing against other schools and music events, but that instructors must deal with some students who have received four years of music instruction combined with others who have zero experience. These teachers are truly miracle workers. The same hurdle exists for many high school inquiry teachers, especially students that don't have an opportunity to join the class in middle school. I love my job. I love working for Dearborn, my fellow staff, and especially... Sorry, got cut off here. I'll move on to the next one, because that one continued on for a little bit further. Next one is from Emily Malazo. I think she might have submitted a blue card in person, just as a blue card. "Ms. Raina Mata, I would like to acknowledge all the special education staff at Whitmore Bowls who went above and beyond their job descriptions to put students first during the pandemic. Thank you." Next is from Courtney Dubiak. "I am a speech pathologist at Whitmore Bowls and would like to give a shout-out to the special, to my fellow special ed colleagues for the amazing job that they're doing and that's been done throughout the district. I have seen these special ed teachers, SLPs, SSWs, OTs, and psychologists give up their prep time, lunches, and spend numerous hours of their own time making materials to accommodate their students and families." Next is from Mary Weaver. "I would like to commend all the hard work special education staff at OL Smith who go above and beyond every day to support our students, our staff, and each other. I'm so pleased to be part of such a strong team. This is the Viking Way." Next comment is from Samir Abdullah. "Dear community, I would like to take a moment to commend Mrs. S. for being my frontline hero during the pandemic. My son began kindergarten during the pandemic virtual year. I was very concerned about my son's education and expected him to have a lost year. This was not the case. Mrs. S. came to the rescue for my son and about twenty other kindergarten students beginning their school journey. God bless her heart. I watched her handle all those beginning learners online. Teaching kindergarten must have been the most challenging task of any teacher. Thank you to all the kindergarten teachers across the district for all the hard work you do. I knew I couldn't do it." Next is from Abir Bazi. "Throughout my years working in the school district, teachers have worked very hard to create a safe and loving environment. This past year, Dearborn welcomes students back to in-person learning. The transition to learning alongside pandemic protocols has still taken a lot of work, and teachers are able to pull it off. There have been many challenges teachers have faced, however, they continue to have a positive attitude every day." Next is from Kathy Loris. Trustee Hosep, I'll do this.
Yeah, I'll take it. I'll take it from here. Thank you so much, President Thor. This is from Ms. Kathy Loris of Dearborn. This might be a long comment, so you may want to time me. My name is Kathy Loris. This is my eighth year being a GSRP teacher here in Dearborn Public Schools. Tonight, I'd like to thank, or take you to on a journey back through time to explain what I have been doing as a dedicated teacher in our district. We are going to begin our journey on Wednesday, March 11th, 2020, approximately 3:10 PM, when I was handed a letter by my building principal and given explicit instructions to read it in its entirety before putting into the hands of every parent picking up their child at dismissal time. This letter stated that Whitmore Bowls was the first school in the entire state with a presumed positive case of COVID-19, that we would be closing for an undetermined amount of time effective immediately. Despite the enormous amount of fear and uncertainty I had, I swallowed everything down, and I did it anyway. I put my students first as I calmly explained to each parent what was in the letter. Friday, 3/13/2020, Dearborn Public Schools joined the two-week pause. Other teachers were able to gather and send home materials and say their "see you" letter, "see you later" to their, to their students, while all of Whitmore Bowls staff did not get to do the same. Guess what? I did it anyway. I put my students first, and I reached out to all of my parents via phone to update them and all, update them all and soothe their worries and concerns as best as I could. April 2020, I spent twenty-six hours on the phone with over two days with my families to walk them through how long to log into Google Meet. I finally got to see my students. All of the two days into live video meetings, they were shut down by the district due to inappropriate behavior from secondary students. Guess what? I persevered and found a way to teach anyway. I put my students first, and I posted daily lessons and activities for my students on my odd blog. Parents admitted their students' learning by taking pictures and videos and sending them to me unreminded. I shared those pictures back on the next day so my students could see each other. I created my own YouTube channel so my students could still see me teaching them. May of 2020, I was given thirty minutes and only thirty minutes to gather any and all of the materials that I thought I would need to continue to teach from home. My main support line for my second-grade-level teaching partners were not allowed to be there at the same time. And guess what I did anyway? I put my students first through many tears. I grabbed as much as I could from my classroom and tried to desperately not to look on how it was to everything exactly as I had it left on on March 11th."
If you could get to the last paragraph, I think.
Toward the and through the entire journey, I've been told I'm a hero because I'm building an airplane whilst flying, and I've been given the most sincere thanks for the great work that I continue to do every day under adverse circumstances. But a quick quote from Rashida Costa that says, "Words are from the lips. Actions are from the heart." While I have been giving everything that I have in me to my students and their families, there have been nothing given back to my, to me or my heart in return. Ms. Amanda Olson said, "Watching my coworkers day-to-day, I'm amazed at their perseverance, dedication, and innovation every single day. We are tired, but we all smile and encourage. We pour from an empty cup, yet still give every ounce of energy and love to our kids. We worry about them academically, physically, socially, and emotionally. We take their struggles and their stress and their worries home with us. Their trauma and ours keeps us up at night. The support that we give and receive from our fellow teachers is what gets us through. I worry for new teachers, but I will support them with everything that I have. I worry for veteran teachers, and I'm forever grateful for the support they offer every colleague who needs them, even when they're struggling. Please support and respect your teachers. We are the support beams of the institution, just trying to keep the roof from caving in." Mrs. Munamashrahav Dearborn says, "I'm a school psychologist within the district. I want to positively recognize my kindergarten teachers at McCullough Elementary. They have had a tremendously difficult year so far. Their classrooms are maxed out, and they have several high-needs students in their classrooms. The students are coming in struggling greatly post-COVID, and this has been incredibly emotionally taxing. I have seen them put every ounce of their, of their will into helping their students, giving all of themselves and leaving nothing..." Of their will into helping their students, giving all of themselves and leaving nothing in the tank each day. This has been one of the hardest years we have experienced. The behavioral and emotional difficulties. Are more than I've seen in the last ten years, but no matter how hard the days get or how drained they feel. These ladies come out and they come back and give their. All each day with a positive attitude and a determination to help their kids. They are incredible ladies and have shown a great deal of grit and selflessness. I am proud to be their coworker. Mrs. Allison Wolfski said, I'm writing as a parent of three children that currently attend Dearborn Public Schools. We have. A child at an elementary, middle school and high school. I want to share our gratitude. To our, to their amazing teachers. I want to highlight. All the amazing moments that have, that these teachers provided during the COVID nineteen crisis when Co- COVID. Nineteen hit in March twenty twenty, each teacher reached out several times to support our children's. Academic and emotional needs. One teacher often provided a chat time so students could see their families or their friends through a video chat. Another teacher came up to our home to drop off art supplies for a project and stayed at a distance to chat for a few. One teacher who had two of our children often reached out by text or email to check on both of them. Which has been greatly appreciated in a time of crisis. Every teacher went above and beyond each day. There were many times where there were materials pickups with teachers waving and greeting students. From afar at school. Countless phone calls, home visits, letters in the mail, emails, video chats and many times. Our educators came through in a time of need. Our teachers are invaluable. Our teachers are one of the countless important staff members. That supported our students through COVID nineteen. As a resident of Dearborn. And a proud parent of three students attending the district, I want to say thank you. To all that you continue to support my children every, each and every day. Miss Fatma Sharara of Dearborn Heights says, good evening, Board of Education and Dr. Milaico. I want to speak. About some of the things that I see as the E L D specialist at Gear Park. I can talk about every single person in my building because I know how tirelessly they work to put students first. I also know how physically and emotionally tired they are. Talking about every single person in my building would be the right thing to do. But it would be too much to read in one board meeting. In kindergarten, I see Mrs. S with a student who has special needs and needs a parapro. Which we are short of five in our building. She comes in to work every day with her calm demeanor and doesn't skip a beat. In first grade, I see Mrs. G, a veteran teacher who is always doing her own research. To learn more on how to support her special needs students. In second grade, I see Mrs. W reminding herself. That these students haven't had a normal school year since kindergarten, so it might take a bit longer for them to do. Things and that's okay. In third grade, I see Mrs. D who provides her students with a calming environment so they are able to focus on their work. And feel safe. In fourth grade, I see Mrs. H going above and beyond supporting her. Uh, grade mates who are new to the classroom while providing her students with rigorous learning to make up for the learning loss. In fifth grade, I see Mrs. K who balances the needs of her students as well as being the best listener to her staff. As a union representative. On our support staff, I commend Mrs. B who is a vital as our social worker. She has uh focuses on the social emotional well-being of staff and students. I see, I also see Mrs. Uh, M, our speech language pathologist who advocates for. Uh, our students teaches them what is simply right. All of these important people make Gear Park what it is. They put students first regardless of anything. We've had a lot of changes in our district, but I hope that we never lose any of these vital people that are my family. Mrs. Emily Metash of Dearborn says, these past two years have been very difficult. For te- teachers had to go through. The teaching profession has been bashed and ridiculed. And the results are in. Hardly anyone wants to teach or become a teacher. The teachers have been sitting through several P Ds on trauma. In these P Ds, we hear over and over again, keep Maslow's hierarchy of needs in mind. Students can't learn before basic needs are met or mean. It is also the same for teachers. We cannot possibly be effective teachers until our basic needs are met. My colleagues go above and beyond the call of duty daily. As a result, we are burned and frustrated. We love teaching, we love our students, but many of us are tired of sacrificing the needs. Of ourselves and our families. The love of teaching students cannot always be enough. It is time for all school districts to recognize the value of effective teachers. At the building that I work at, McCullough Eunice, I could go on and on about the. Amount of extra time and money teachers put in. Per just a few, we had a fundraising committee that puts together fun activities to bridge the gap between home and school. Many of these events are outside of school hours that teachers attend. The P B I S team organizes pep rallies every month where we play games and give away prizes. Where do the games come from? Teachers buy them or they get them donated. Where do the prizes come from? Teachers buy them and they get them donated. Um, when do we organize these events on our time? Over the summer, we worked tirelessly to create a new. Flight plan for the beginning of the school year. We met together on our own time. Last year, we were able to give away three virtual reality of kululus to our students. How do we get those teachers and families of tea- of teachers donated? We had the teacher create shirts for the staff, then two teachers brought prizes and raffled them. Off to the staff for buying the shirts and contributing to be P B I S. Like I said, I could continue writing, but I will stop for now. Teachers are just asking to be appreciated. And recognized for going above and beyond on a daily basis. The thank you letters are not, I think she meant not cutting it. Please consider Maslow's hierarchy of need, not just for students, but for teachers too. Miss Elizabeth Garcia of Grusil. Said, I would like to give a huge thank you to all of the amazing social workers in our district. Who are instrumental in the lives of students, families and staff during these challenging times. Mrs. Carrie Mukush of Canton said, I want to sh- shout out the teachers and support staff at Hague Elementary. For being so selfless, understanding, supportive and attentive to the needs of all of their students. This past year has left a mark on all of us. Their ability to repeatedly put students first by working even longer hours, wearing even more hats and dealing with personal. Personality shortages, all while keeping up their already long list of duties. Is inspiring, makes me so proud to be part of this school.